All right, I call the order, the master plan commission of July 19th, 2021, our first in person volume in a year and a half or so. We get a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Sheavone?
Here.
And Mr. Cox will be answering.
First thing, approval of the June 21st, 2021 minutes. Anybody have any comments or corrections? Joe, you got anything? Good. All right, so make a motion.
Almost, she gets seven minutes.
Oh, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. First agenda item, Great Lakes fish and coral, is someone here represented? You guys can run it up. Steve. And whatever your comfortable with. Don't be overly involved. We'll force you to do it. Why don't you go ahead and just give a quick overview, and then we'll go to our planners' comments.
And I think what they wanted to see, the trim cap.
So, this is the trim cap, the metal trim cap that we noted in the memorandum.
Okay.
It's just wrapped plastic, so.
Right.
It doesn't have all channel letters.
Good.
All right, that's all.
All right, on Great Lakes, we're staying within the same boundary as the other side ones, 14-foot raceway. And what we're doing is to use less improved surrounding wall, we're going to do a capsule because that is his logo, and we're going to put a capsule on the bottom, which is actually smaller than the other raceway letters that were originally there on the other side, or actually smaller than the other side. We're like, well, 11 inches, and I think the other side's like 13-inch letters. That was there. It's still there.
Okay. All right, I know we've got comments, and I know you guys have seen these, and you've got something new. I don't think these are new, new comments, just the ones that you've seen, but if you want to go over your comments, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my memo dated July 11th does not reflect the changes, so, but I'll go through and note what, so, the tenant space wasn't identified, but on this revised plan, it shows this 30-foot space, which should give you 60, 60 feet, so square footage wise, I think it's, I think it's just fine. The, did you identify on here on the revised plan, your total square footage?
I don't think, I don't know.
Oh, yes, sign area.
Oh, wow.
Yes, you can't, you can't exceed 60 square feet, so, provided it's below 60 square feet, because the, the plan that we, that was previously reviewed looked like it was significantly larger.
Right, I mean, the top would be their 18-inch letters, so by 14, foot and a half.
Yeah, because it says, what is that?
And then the fish coral is only 11 by 9, 9 through 4 inches.
What, can I, can I, so these are individual letters?
Yes, on the raceway.
And how tall are these?
Those are 18.
Is that considered, what does wall text mean?
It's going on the wall, that's what's going on the wall. That's the wall text.
Okay, so these are 18 inches tops?
Yes. 14 inches, like, 4 foot 6.
And then the total length is 18 feet?
I think it's on the side, no, I don't know. Yes, it's 14 feet, I think.
16.
14. Wall text is 14. That's 1 foot 6, just looking at it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So it's an inch and a half, or it's a foot and a half by 14 feet long.
And then the other one's 11 inches by 11, oh, it's 11 to a lot.
Yeah, 11 to a lot. That's what's identified as the capsule.
Right.
So area wise, there's, I don't think there's a problem.
Okay.
Based on the tenant space.
Right.
And then there's a requirement that the, so two lines of copy are okay, but they can't exceed 2/3 of the panel height. The panel height's not identified on here, do you know if it adheres to the panel?
I don't remember.
Typically, when you, these would be dimensioned right on.
The sign area, it says 57 and a half. Right there on the bottom line?
Oh, is that?
Of the text, yeah, that's sign area, that's your face, facial.
57 and a half. So about 4.8 feet tall?
I, yeah. 18.
So for 57 and a half, 2/3 of that would be 38 inches?
I was gonna say it's around 36, and then you'd have to, yeah, a little bit more spacing.
So I think what I would recommend to the commission is just, these calculations, you typically want to have those on the plan, so the commission's inclined to approve it this evening, I would approve it subject to, and just a revised plan that shows these, yeah, just so for the city's sake, when they go back and look at it, 5, 10, whatever number of years later, whoever looks at it can pick it up and say, oh, okay, this complied because it's all identified on the plan. And when you dimension it, if you can just dimension, you know, like I physically wrote on, you know, dimension the sign panel height, and then do the same thing with these, just makes it a little clearer for me.
A little clearer for you guys, I think.
Yeah.
I think he was doing this in the 30, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
He did this one off.
And then, all this, all signs have to be comprised of individually raised letters, that fishing coral part.
That would be a flat face.
Yeah, so that's not permissible, it has to be individually raised channel letters.
Okay.
A logo is okay to do as a, you know, like an individual logo, basically similar to a channel letter.
I know, but I was just saying, the one next to it, that's a flat face for a fitness plan, that's not, I don't think those are individually raised letters.
Yeah, that, so I'm not sure how that ever went in that way.
Because this is his logo, and we're trying to also save him money, because the individual letters would be a lot more money.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how the Planet Fitness went in that way, but the Triton Marine, which was the previous occupant, they, there was actually quite a bit of conversation with the planning commission a few years ago on that sign, and the sign criteria that I'm referencing for Alexandria Square, the property owner management company actually came back to the city, their legal counsel worked with the city's legal counsel, and they made a case that they weren't subject to that, and so there was a compromise between the city and Triton Marine, but going forward, the, the property owner was to supply some new requirements for the city to consider. That never happened, so legal counsel for the city is reaching out to the legal counsel for the property owner to let them know that he needs to submit that, and this application does need to comply with the regulations for Alexandria Square, which only permit the individually raised letters. So there's been, I apologize, some of the past things that have occurred on that building have led you to see, like the plan, so some of those are old, and I don't know how they happened, but going forward, they do need to meet the criteria.
I wish you had your face. Was there a logo?
Something with.
The guy doesn't have a logo, that's the other thing, too.
Yeah, we're not suggesting you can't use your logo, we're just suggesting you can't do that, or we're saying you can't do that digital print flat element. You could do your logo on a three-dimensional, individually raised object versus a flat plane.
But then it doesn't have to be lit up.
It's just, type.
Doubt, is it already to put it out, a flat plane with a three-dimensional letter, in regards of like a flat back, but this won't be lit up?
So it'd be a raised element?
Yeah, it'd be raised, and, I mean, his coral, those would be visually printed, but the fish and coral would be raised. It's not going to be like Great Lakes, I mean, you're talking maybe an inch raised.
So the, the logo would be just flat, and then the fishing coral would be?
You would, would you have a problem with a capsule still with raised letters? With no, it's not going to light up, unless, I guess we could do the size, we could light the sides.
Yeah, so.
And then just have like a three-dimensional letter.
Yeah, so these are, the criteria is something that's adopted for that plaza. I don't really, I don't get to pick and choose, like, I understand what you're saying, nor can the commission.
Right.
So, I mean, I do think it needs to be raised, three-dimensional objects.
So they're, you know, the channel, and we do revise them, yeah.
Yeah, and then, really, that, that was, you already addressed the metal trim, and then the raceway color needs to be, to match.
Right, now, if we were to make basically the raceway black, with his letters coming out, and then I, we could actually do, it's not a capsule, we'll make a form of his coral, and light that up, can we do that?
Yeah, I'm not able to sort of image it in my head.
We'll send it to you then.
Yeah, the raceway needs to, yeah, it needs to match the facial.
What? No, I understand it, but on this, I'm going to use the raceway for, to make it look like his logo.
Okay, yeah, if you can.
Your face would just be black. The bad part, I can make it same size as the facial is.
Yeah, I think if you can identify that on a revised plan, that could be helpful.
Sounds good.
And then, so I think those, those issues, and then the colors, planning commission, you do have, in the revised planning zoning code, the sign code that we updated a year or so ago, two years ago, you have the ability to permit primary and secondary colors, so you just need to determine if this meets that. I think it does, it's a little hard to tell, you know, the colors, but I think they're all primary or secondary colors. And with that said, then, with a revised plan that complies with those requirements, I would think it's acceptable. Now, if the commission wants to approve it subject to, I'd be glad to look at it, or the building department, that's up to the commission.
Anybody else have any other comments?
No.
Good. All right, commission, you guys got questions?
So I guess I wasn't clear with the fishing coral, could that be a black background with some type of white lettering that's adhered to it, or something providing three-dimensional, or?
Well, that's what I was asking.
I know you explained it, but it went over my head.
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be individually raised, three-dimensional.
Okay, and what I was getting at, though, I'm going to use my raceway as a black background, I can make the rest of the raceway the thick color of the facial, and then we can do a cutout of his coral, and do that with, that'll be like a cutout letter, and then we'll have like a three-dimensional print on that, so we can light that all up for him. I'll.
Yeah, I'm sort of understanding, but I'd like to see it on, yeah, on a plan.
I mean, you could try to keep with his logo.
Yeah.
Because I know he runs that pretty bad.
Yeah, I mean, and we're, and we're not, we're not by any means suggesting you can't use his logo, it just, we need to adhere to the criteria.
Right. I'll explain to you.
Okay.
We revised it, okay.
Joe, do you have any?
The top part's good, though, right?
Yeah, the commission needs to act on the colors, but yes.
Okay.
Sound okay to you, or are you okay?
I think it's okay with your, what you're agreeing to, yeah, as I understand it, the fishing coral, it'll be separate letters?
Yes.
The logo is going to be a three-dimensional raised.
Right, with a digital print on the face.
Okay.
That will be like a flat, little piece of, like, but it will have trim cap, just like with the channel letters.
I'm fine with the colors.
Yeah, I think the colors would be, you know, primary and secondary.
Yeah. I didn't, I don't have a problem with the colors.
Okay. So I guess we have, we have several conditions if we want to do this, and allow an administrative review. So I'll make, I'll make a motion, so, make a motion that we approve the plan with several conditions. The revised plan should be submitted, it shows the exact dimensions of all assigned elements. The plan will include raised three-dimensional lettering for all elements. The colors are acceptable, and the revised plan would need to be reviewed administratively. Is there a second?
I'll answer.
I'll second that.
Francis, is there, that sounded like an excellent motion.
Okay.
I think I can check some more there.
Can I just ask about your name is?
Bob Matthews, S E M, you know, Y.
And what company are you in?
Erie Design.
I'm sorry?
Erie Design.
Erie Design.
Sorry, she was knocking back into the swing of things. It's not as easy when it's not floating below their face.
Came out of that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, we're discussing on the motion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
So he came out of the, out of the district, but saying that, and anxious, so getting, he made districts, never made.
I was wondering if the meat grinder was still meat, like.
Oh, yeah. That is not the same thing.
All right, so yeah, just get that submitted and all reviewed administratively, and hopefully we can see.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is silven dispensing.
We're not all fat.
So, yeah, you were here last month, had some comments, and you have submitted a revised plan, if you want to just kind of go over in general the change, or actually, let's let's sign this plan real quick before we forget, back in that in-person groove again. All right, just, yeah, just going to give us an overview of what changed since the last time.
Sure. For the record, I didn't see this on the fast end.
Thank you.
I know it's weird. So, we had a lengthy discussion about the design for silven, and we'd be branding the block through the original design, and what we come back with, based on the discussion that we had, and one of the recommendations was, these were a design that we could come up with that would expose more of the brick in the monument sign, so that, couple as much as the original design was doing. So what we've done is, we've taken original design, which was a panel that was about pretty much worth the, the cover approximately 67% of the monument sign, we've actually reduced that footprint to topsworth, the revised design, which you have approved, and so we reduced the footprint of the panel itself to just hold the logo, the logo and name of the company, and removing the existing address, it's a traditional letter, we're not touching it, as it is, and so, the only thing we're going to update is we're going to remove the existing logo, we're going to remove the existing, the original lettering for coral classics, and replace it with white color covered panel, that's top square feet, it will be white on the back, and cut white vinyl on the front, so we give it some depth as a dimension as well. It would be raised from the monument sign, so it would be installed with a standoff, so that it floats away from the monument sign, and is at the same depth, as we will, as the existing letters, so the existing letters extend about 2 and 1/2 inches away from the monument sign to the panel, that we would be installing at the same depth, so it will float away from the existing monument sign, and expose now over 60% of the brick, and so we reduce the footprint by 10%, and increase the square by about 60%.
I think there was a change to the, to the building.
That's correct. So we did the same thing, we reduced the panel to minimize the size of the panel footprint, and just go around the logo, so that we just have the logo and the white panel around it, the contour to, to the edge of the panels, as opposed to being as big and as wide of a panel as it would be at the proposed floor. So again, reducing the size of the footprint, as opposed to, I would say.
Okay. I know we've got new comments from our planner, so go over.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report dated July 11th, as the applicant described, the panel that's being attached to, adhered to the existing ground monument sign, has been reduced in size, the proposal is to use the polycarbonate panel rather than the metal, that was actually discussed at the last meeting, a change that was made during the meeting, and again, the purpose of the reduction is to see more of the brick, and, and an attempt to, I guess, to compromise with the, the city's desire, which was to have the individual raised dimensional letters. And then on the wall sign, it's depicted slightly larger now, it's a 4 by 16 panel, 64 square feet compared to previously, which was 4 by 10 or 40 square feet, so, the area is not a concern, it's really more of the type of sign, it felt fairly clear from the last meeting, the commission was wanting to do the individual, they want to see the individual channel letters and logo on the signage as opposed to the panel, so really is something that the commission just needs to determine, in terms of if the panel's acceptable on the monument side, and the monument sign, and the reduced nature that it's shown, or if the individual letters and raised logo is more appropriate. And so I, you know, my, my comment was, you know, perhaps there is some compromise here, that the wall sign is left as the panel, it's increased in size, you get more visibility, and maybe the commission wants to stay focused, excuse me, on the ground sign with the individual letters, but again, that's something that's, you know, the commission just needs to make that determination, area of the sign is fine.
Thank you. You guys have any, any thoughts on this new plan, either of you? I guess I'll ask, so, you know, we, last meeting we talked about trying to get the individual pieces, so what was the conversation when you went back and explained that?
So we, so I went back with, I shared the letter, the logo, the response I had produced, I pulled it back to them, and then we discussed, again, you know, the options, we still want to go down with the original letters, then again, cost is a factor, and so is the amount of what we have to do on the monument sign, to replace letters with letters, like the many reasons we discussed previously, like we have whole letters, there's penetration marks of all, you'd be on the monument sign, so those are going to be repaired, and then the discoloration on the monument sign, some existing sign, the new letter will not cover these, the existing letters 100%, so those will be exposed.
Would this proposal here cover those penetration marks?
Yes, yes. The panels, the panel is designed, we can't uncover what is currently there, from the logo and from the dimensional letters, and we have to, we won't remove the address, so those, those will stay intact, so there's no reason, the reason we were making the panel, as big as we were, was because we're proposing to remove the address numbers as well, as part of the initial design, by reducing, by leaving the, by leaving the address as is, then we were able to, that reduced the panel to just a little bit, right, so that you just see the logo, and so we were able to reduce the footprint of the white panel, and then put the, the logo on the panel, and a much reduced size, and as I indicated, it's not stable, the sizes, but we take the sizes into consideration, we reduce the size of the panel to 20 square, to 12 square, so we're now exposing almost 60% of the monument sign, all the breadth of the monument sign, the full original length exposed at 30%, so we've done the exposure.
Are you implying that behind this proposed panel, that the block is somewhat deteriorated or not acceptable?
No, what I'm saying is, when we remove the letters, because the weight, the dimensional letters are not taking into account, there's studs that stick out from the letters, they're drilled into, into the brick, so when we pull the letters out, there's going to be penetration marks in the, in the stone where the studs were drilled into it, right, so those penetration marks would have to be repaired, meaning they'd have to be filled in.
Okay.
And also, because of the weight dimensional, the weight dimensional letters sit on the face of a, of a building, when they're exposed to the sun, right, everything around the letters gets, has wear, has wear, and so it starts to, has discoloration, so when you remove the letters, it's almost like taking a Band-Aid off, and you've been in the sun, right, when you pull it off, you know, your skin is lighter underneath the Band-Aid, so that will remain as well, when we remove the old letters, and when put new letters, because they're not going to line up exactly, right, so the way, what we're proposing is to put this panel so that we're able to cover that part of the monument sign, and expose, have a uniform look around the whole monument sign, there'll be no discoloration, right, there'll be no exposure to the existing penetration marks. The monument sign isn't damaged, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just there's holes in it, it's like when you're going to put a picture frame in the wall, and you take the picture frame out, the hole is going to be there, right, so you have to patch it, if it's going to be exposed, or what you're putting over it doesn't cover.
I think, in Mr. Francis' comments, that the sign location is prominent, meaning this one, the one on the front, and that's, that probably should be in accordance with the code, okay, with individual lettering, and I think is what he's alluding to.
So that's where I'm, I guess I'm lost, I don't, I don't, I haven't looked at the code that was referenced, and there's no code that says that a monument sign should have dimensional letters. I didn't, I didn't see it, so I could have missed it, but I referenced the code that was referenced, so there's something in the code that says that a monument sign is made out of brick, has to have the dimensional letters.
Mr. Francis, can you?
And that's, that was my question, do you agree with it? What's there, what have we typically done in the past if we've seen something like this come?
Typically, we require the, the individual channel letters, and I think that the, that that requirement is born within the architectural design standards, the citywide standards, is where the city has traditionally required that.
So there's like a process in the way? Because what, if I understand what you're saying is that this is not necessarily staying within the code, by having that panel there, because I know it's not like part of a square, it's not like a Alexander square with a specific, but.
Criteria.
Yeah, specific criteria.
It's not, I think it's not that there's a code requirement for the raised, the individual letters, it's, and the code is that we have the ability to say what we think looks best and what, what should be done.
And I, my, 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 And so I requested some, some guidance as to what can I propose as, if channel letter in, or dimensional letters, I shouldn't say channel, dimensional letters. Is that the only option yet that's going to accommodate, you know, the creative events and all of the other events? Is that the only recommendation that's going to be approved? And part of the discussion was, is there a way where we can expose more of the, of the structure, more of the stone, that would allow the monument sign to be more prominent? I believe that we've done, accomplished that by reducing the size of the footprint, exposing the existing letter, or other today. And so, and unitary. Outside of that, I don't know. It's, the recommendation is going to be that I have to propose to the customer that they have to be channeled with or the dimensional letters. Again, I go back to the, to the program that was referenced that says, you know, I don't know how to interpret the code because I have read it, I have it with me. And all I can read is that it should be compatible and compatible with and not in stark contrast to, to those used on adjacent structures. So we're not doing anything out of the ordinary, right? I don't go along with all the, all the adjacent monument signs. We're not, we're not doing anything out of the ordinary. We're recommending it's color, we're using color, it's rose. I believe we're providing a nice space to the sign.
There's no specific, no item for this? Is that what he said?
That this specifically says it has to be individual channel letters? No. What, what the code states is that regarding aesthetics and design, the, the city has the ability to require reasonable and appropriate methods. And we have traditionally on new sign applications for ground monument signs, we've, we've required the individual letters on the ground signs. I mean, I do think that it's, as proposed, does give more exposure to the monument sign itself rather than just sort of slapping up a large panel on there and covering it. This is better. But I also don't think that the commission's request for the individual letters and the logo, raised dimensional logo is, is that significant in the scheme of the, the request. I understand it's not within what the applicant wants to, to spend in terms of the money that may be budgeted for a sign. I think it was a thousand dollars for the sign. And so I understand that's not necessarily what the applicant was thinking, but, you know, the city is attempting to clean up, if you will, and enhance the appearance of a lot of properties and signage is important. And so when applications come in, we try to, to do just that.
See, that's my concern. I think you did a, a good job trying to stay within the constraints that your, your client has given you there. But with like what Mr. Fran says, you know, there's, there does, there is a movement, I don't know if we call that, but just try to clean up. We can't go back and make everybody change all their signs, but when they come in front of us, we need to move forward. And if, my concern is if we approve this as it is, now we're, we're veering from that and then the next person who sits at that seat three months from now is going to be expecting a little bit more, a little bit more, and we shift farther and farther away from that. Am I off?
I don't think so. And you've got, last month's, I'm going to see it on your computer, it's got the, the parents put together, it's got the, the old sign, the old Cobra Plastics. As long as that was there, I'm not sure how long, I'm trying to think, it's been there for quite a while. You know, they had the raised letters even at that point. It's a prominent business. It's a large site. It's, it's a major site.
Right. And as it is, again, I don't, I'm not trying to rehash this conversation, but the, the cost of doing something like that is extremely expensive. A little particular, that particular sign is going to have a P C. P C is actually not recommended for that type of, of location. You see expensive tracks with the lumbered tracks, it's pretty, it requires maintenance. If you were going to do that, the reduction to the, to the product or you would, of course, the, the, the cost of it would be more expensive. The cost factor is, cuts more. And again, I know it's not true to start about cost, but this will mean as far as my customers concerned, if he has a budget and he has to do the grant, his whole company is, everything has to change, right? This is just an element. So again, I'm just trying to, to learn the relationship with the guidelines that I see that we discussed last week, or not, or not as you possibly say.
I think we recognize what your position is, and that's no problem. I understand you're trying to make a, a really concerted effort to, for a good appearance. However, the problem wise area is twofold, I think. Number one, if we permit this now, then this opens the door for other things to the future. Number two, someone could come back and say, well, you had individual letters before. Why would you approve something like this now? That puts us in a position where, you know, now we're making exceptions based on specific things and they may not be as pertinent as what you're presenting, but still it's an exception to what we're trying to provide.
I completely understand.
You know, that's, or no, we're not here to hold anybody up or to, you know, prevent anything because I think you did a nice job. But it, it's not in conformance, I think, what we're trying to accomplish with the rest of the signs.
And I guess my own point in all of this is, when I go to another customer that has a monument sign and that does not have existing original letters on it or has nothing on it, anybody mind now going to the, take the approach of playing the customer role and the only option is the initial letters? Essentially, that's what I'm hearing, but not for this customer, but I do a lot of work in Massa Gonia, so this is, I do a lot of work all over the area, right? So Plugsworth has different guidelines, so it's a, or I'm just suggesting a little bit that should be the same, right? But again, I'm just trying to avoid, get this done to your satisfaction because you have, you have a responsibility. I recognize that. At the same time, I'm trying to understand, you know, as I, as I'm approached with my customers, how do I actually, how am I actually able to, 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 to propose that if the guideline that I'm interpreting doesn't really tell me that, doesn't tell me that whatever was existing before I need to, or I have to research it to, to be again, I all, again. What I'm, what I'm proposing, high quality, it's going to look fantastic, it's durable, it will last forever, it will look like that in ten years. And I think based on the conversation that we had previously, one hundred percent appears to one recommendation was to expose more of the stone, and that's what we've done. It's going to over sixty percent of the monument sign, which is, before, I would agree, need more, like we were covering all the, 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 so now we're leaving the percentage.
Well, I, I think that comment was made as a general comment for the situation, but it was not intended to mean that you could just put something up and just expose more block. Okay? I think that still there's more to look like we alluded to here.
So I, I understand. So my, my takeaway is I have to go back to my customer and call them, the only option to update the monument sign is the natural.
I think, you know, we're, we're taking a step back if we, if we go with this from what was, you know, what was on that site, looking at that, you know, the raised Cobra Plastics ink, all individual letters, the logo and individual raised item, we're definitely taking a step back. And that's, you know, at, at worst, I think we want to stay the same. You know, if we can't make something better, at least we shouldn't be stepping back. I think we're stepping back with this sign to, to a lesser standard of just putting a panel up there. Yes, there's probably additional cost, there may be some additional work, there may be, you know, if there's, if there's shadowing, it may require power washing or so. So I don't know what, 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 we can give her some of that kind of stuff. You know, there's, I don't know the details of what, what you can do to, to fill the holes, but it seems like there should be something high quality that can be done. But I think personally, we've got, we've got the two signs. We've got the, the wall sign on the building, which, you know, for that we could, you know, what we were looking at last time, I think, you had the picture the last time, was it just this? Very, okay, so similar, just I think this is, this is maybe bigger.
It's going to be more like a tank or a wash floor.
Little longer. You know, I'm okay with that. You know, we're, you measured it out, you put it in your application, it's like almost five hundred feet.
With the building and stuff?
I mean, how far, how far back is? We had that on.
Sixty-four square.
Four hundred and forty feet back off the road. Yeah, I'm fine with, with that sign. This is right up on the road, we're twenty feet off or something like that. I, I would like to see the individual letters. I think we're taking a step back with this. I think something, something, a good looking sign is important out here. We're trying to, we're trying to upgrade if, if nothing else, maintain but at least upgrade. It, it's my opinion that it needs to be the individual letters like we discussed last time. I don't know if you guys.
I'm trying to, as essentially a compromise, allowing the polycarbonate sign on the building for everything you've stated, the distance from the road, all that.
Let it be that it has the white background, it'll make it easier to read than it is on, on the building, when it's that far off. But I think the sign at the road, in my opinion, should be the visual letters. If you guys disagree, I mean, I'd be willing to, just to move the project forward, make a, a motion to approve with contingent that it comes back with the raised letters, individual letters, contingent on administrative review, so you wouldn't have to come back if you, if they would agree to do that. Short of that, my recommendation would be, you know, go back to the drawing board and see what you can come up with.
Well, that's just it. I don't think there is anything else, right? What you're, what you're indicating, you're telling me is that it has to be channel letter, individual letter, nothing.
That's my, that's, that's my opinion for the one out here by the road. I think it does need to be that. And I think I, yeah, we talked about, you know, we're covering up a lot of area and we'd like to see less of that area covered up, but we also made it pretty clear, I thought, that, that we felt the individual letters was what, what was preferred, so.
Sure. And you also suggested, you know, can we come up with something that exposes a little bit more of the brick and that's.
And you did. But I, I still think, just a big panel out there, I think we're taking a step back on the signage. It's not like you're one unit in a, in a group of things. It's already got a panel sign where you're into replacing a panel like at a shopping center or something like that. This is a standalone monument sign. Significant amount has been invested to, to put the, the monument there with landscaping and lighting and everything. And now we're going to let the lettering take a step back. I would hope that materials that will hold up can be used. I don't, you know, like, you know, the details of that is not something I'm concerned about. If it ends up having to be something, it's got to be maintained, it's got to be maintained. I don't know if you guys will have, you guys have any more thoughts? If not, I'll make a.
I agree.
Motion.
I'm good. I agree.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the signs with the panel sign on the building as proposed, but the monument sign should be individual channel, individual raised letters. They, a revised plan should be submitted and it can be approved administratively.
Okay. So it's a conditional approval?
It's, it's an approval with conditions.
Okay.
So is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Fran.
So then I would, I would ask the applicant, understand that what your preference certainly is based on what your client is telling you. But what the commission's motion is doing is giving you the latitude to go back to the client and say, this is what they're willing to approve, which is individual letters and logo, raised logo. But if you don't think that's something that your client is even going to be willing to consider, you could certainly request to continue this discussion rather than the commission providing you that motion.
The continuation would be for what though? I mean, it's already been stated that nothing will be approved unless it's dimensional letters. So I don't see a continuation.
And that, and that's fine.
I mean, am I misinterpreting this?
Yeah, I just wanted to always give that option.
I understand, but I just want to make sure that a continuation doesn't mean you're doing anything because I can't come back with anything other than what you already approved.
You never know, I mean, maybe something, maybe there is something out there that nobody here is thinking of that would come up before the next meeting, something that, I, I don't know what that would be, but, you know, that, that's, that was, would give you that option compared to.
No, I, I'm, I'm.
And I think.
I think what you're saying is perfect, right? What you're saying is you're approving it, they're approving the signs on the condition that the monument sign is dimensional lettered.
Right.
And so, I think a continuation, and I appreciate the, the offer, but I don't think a continuation does anything for me if you're going to turn down this panel. Yeah, at some point, I'm trying to drive it out, one more session.
Well, maybe, maybe your client has a revelation that this is the direction the city wants to see and, but doesn't want to, doesn't want to try to retrofit that existing sign. And maybe they say, well, we're going to go get some additional budget, we're going to put up different, correct, and block and make a different sign. That would have to come back to, for review. So maybe that's something that's not likely based on what you're saying.
I don't see that happening.
Yeah. So, so in that case, then in that instance, it sounds like a, going forward from with conditions and they can determine what their best course of action is.
I understand. And then, thank, so I thank you both. And again, I'm not here to argue that force, but according to the standard you're, we're hearing, which one are we referring to? Because I, I have it.
Specifically, the intent in eleven seventy-nine thirteen, Design and Construction Standards, I think that there's a lot in there that gives the.
So that's a different, I'm sorry, that's a different, that's a different one that was put before. It's the one that was put before, it's eleven seventy-two dot one two.
Yeah, that's the general citywide architectural standards.
Sure.
And specifically within the sign code, there's design standards for signs, eleven seventy-nine thirteen.
Okay.
So just for, for instance, in addition to assuring compliance with the numerical standards of these regulations, the building commissioner or designated representative and the planning commission, as authorized with the advice of the city planner, shall consider the proposed general design, arrangement, texture, material, colors, lighting, placement, and the appropriateness of the proposed sign in relationship to other signs and the other structures, both on the premises and in surrounding areas, and only approved signs which are consistent with the intent purposes and standards and criteria of these regulations. So just in that opening paragraph alone, it gives the city the ability to, to really identify what the specific design that they believe is appropriate for the site. And I think it's been fairly, communicated fairly well that the, that the planning commission's intent is to have it look and feel like what exists now, individual letters with individual raised logo on that particular ground sign as it relates to the frontage so close to high, and they're compromising allowing that, that panel use on the, on the far distance wall.
Totally understand, but if you're going to get, get, get interpretation, we didn't discuss that, that particular one.
Okay.
Because there's not, as the previous applicant was, was discussing, there's a very, there's a specific sign guideline to the plaza that's proposing in the rest of it says that it needs to appear to be used to be fixed, right? This is not that. This is all, this is all subject to interpretation and what we feel is appropriate. I get it. I'm not arguing. I'm not, I have these thoughts.
And those individual, just for, for the record, those individual sign plaza criteria are born out of discussions with an applicant and the city, and that's, that's the city's desire that those individual raised letters, and so those are cemented, if you will, into that, into those documents for those individual plazas.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, that's the first thing we ask.
Yeah.
Does, does the plaza have an existing sign code? Because if it does, then you're stuck, right? There's nothing you can do, right? And they say it needs to be yellow and brown, if that's what they want, and everything is yellow and brown, and you don't have a choice. And at that point, it's, it's very tricky. This is, this is subject to interpretation, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Any more discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for.
Mr. Frans, second.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time.
While we're signing this, the next, the IHOP. All right, have a seat. Justice. All right, can we get your name for the record?
Yeah, sure. My name is Paul Walz, with O.S.P. Architecture, representing IHOP in the franchise.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and give us an overview of what you're proposing and relating accounts?
The intent here is to actually make some modifications to existing Pizza Hut, make a Pizza Hut building, so that we can send these and reopen as IHOP, and that's it. I think our area of planning was on the agenda, and then we've really made some modifications in recent minutes, with something more in line with your expectations. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
And then we have a couple of letters here, one from Brian, and one from, one from Tan in terms of their comments, and we've read through those and kind of have a response. So I don't know if you want us to kind of walk through your letters.
Yeah, we will have Mr. Frans go through his, and then, you know, get on, start and have some responses back, and we can talk about the others and the comments as well. So, Mr. Frans?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that report's dated July 11th, and as the applicant stated, it's an occupancy and rehab of an existing Pizza Hut. And myself and the city's design consultant did have a meeting with the applicant to talk through a number of issues, and I think the plans were fairly responsive to, you know, our conversations, and appreciate it. Just a couple, so a couple of comments, and some of these are easily correctable, the scale issue.
Yeah, these are essentially half-size, 11 by 17, so the 24 hours is drawn to be at scale.
Yeah, well, they should be at scale at half-size drawings too. They're still not quite there.
Right.
At least printed in this version, they're just missing it. It's hard, so then.
Understood.
Yeah, it's difficult to fully evaluate everything. It seems to fit together, the puzzle.
Yeah.
But so, yeah, just a minor detail. And then, parking, like to kind of come back to that, that issue in a minute, we'll talk about the off-road parking, we've had some conversation about that.
Yeah, I have some ideas too.
We can pretty much get back up to six. The building architecture does represent sort of most of the changes since the last time I looked at the plans and remember, so this is, this one's, you know, a little different than, say, the signed, where it's general citywide architectural standards, this falls within the town center district, so specifically 117203 of the code, and there's very specific architectural standards within 117203. And so, some of the highlights, remove the blue metal roof, and I understand that's sort of signature to IHOP, I, you know, get that.
Yeah, okay with that.
Yeah, and you introduced some blue, some blue awnings, window awnings, and then also took the signage, it was previously white and made it blue, so just to kind of capture, I think, the intent, it's, you know, the corporate image of the blue.
Yeah, they have some of that still there.
Some of the elements, yeah. So I think that was, that was appreciated, and implementation of the longer screen wall with a decorative sort of metal cap on, trim cap on the top, changed the color to more of a neutral color. Some faux roof gables were added to reflect the Western Reserve architectural style, and then the east elevation now provides a gable, while the south elevation, the south elevation does clean it up, it's a front 82, and so it does, it does help. I know from talking with Ms. Schultz, and I don't know, when you're, you know, the changes you're making to the roof, how far you tear down, do you go all the way down into the studs and build back up?
No, if the sheathing's in good condition, they'll just, they'll re-roof, but they'll, we'll have to tear down to the sheathing, obviously, when we do the overbuild for the gable, the dormer at the front, at the south elevation, and then these will be stud walls that sit on top of the trusses, we've already started working through our wall sections for the, essentially the rebuild of the parapet. We actually, Pizza Hut had some exhaust fans for their clips and stuff that was very visible from the front. We've actually relocated our exhaust fans inside the parapet, so they're fully screened now. And then, obviously, our rooftop units, now that we have to build walls around the walk-in coolers, we relocated the rooftop unit and added another, and they're fully screened on top of that, that lower roof.
Have you looked at Ms. Schultz's comments about?
Yeah, our team and IHOP's design team didn't really agree with that because of massing. You have that rectangular, the main Pizza Hut building with the parapet, the main central parapet, and so we felt, you know, kind of step up and then step back down with the lower parapet around the walk-in cooler. It just, it felt like a, I guess, a more responsive massive to what was there, dealing with those existing conditions.
You're speaking specifically to the man's parapet.
Yeah, because essentially, the height of the brick, it's kind of broken up on the main Pizza Hut with the hip roof and then the parapet above, but at the walk-in coolers, you would just have the brick, and then we would have the parapet above the brick, and we really didn't want that, that parapet that's wrapped in the hardwood to be, I guess, taller than the brick below, because there's, obviously, there's no break with the shingles around that, so we felt proportionally that one needed to be a little bit lower than the main parapet.
So that rear elevation.
Yeah.
Is that seen from 82, the parapet that's six above with the?
It's about, I would say, 90 to 100 feet back, it's not really that visible.
I think that's probably part of Ping's concern, seeing that.
It's not, it's not coming from the east and from the west, you're pretty much blocked by the adjacent structure, the adjacent building, so it's, it's back in the back of the lot.
Have you done some line of sight analysis? You just made that statement.
Yeah.
Any sketches to look at that?
Not sketches, we've just been, you know, driving by, because we were looking at the landscaping and what to do at the front there, removing that tree that pretty much obscures the front, front elevation, and would be blocking signage anyway, so we're gonna have an arborist to come in and make some recommendations and go through that landscaping, but that, that tree is, is pretty much the dominant element there. There is some low landscaping that we would like to maintain and keep. There was some landscaping, screening, the utilities that you can see from that adjacent drive-through, so obviously, we would keep that. But, yeah, we've, we've been up and down looking at that, but it's, it's far enough away. Essentially, it's in the same location that their current walk-ins that are not enclosed are.
Yeah.
So essentially, we're putting it back there. So if those are visible, then ours would be visible, and I don't think those are visible.
I just think it might be helpful to do a hand sketch or two to show from a scaled perspective. You know, maybe the, maybe the commission doesn't agree, and they can tell me to be quiet, but it just feels like, to see a hand sketch, to sort of see that, how it looks from the street line.
Yeah.
You very well may be 100% correct, but it'd be good to kind of see it on a document.
Right, we might be able to do a photo, photo retouch, a photo overlay and, and, you know, show you what's happening.
I would like to see you guys do some handwork. You guys still do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So that, that was a, and then the muntin bars, that's a nice, and that's, that's good, you added those in, and a lot of these things, we, you know, we talked, these are things that, you know, you've, you've done, and not painting the, the brick and leaving it the, so that, that's a help.
Correct, and we're working with Thomas Brick, they're having their local rep come out, and they'll match that existing brick and make some recommendations.
Okay.
So that we can get pretty close to what's there.
Yeah. And then the other thing that we talked about, has been a concern of the city, is the 24-hour nature of the operation. I'm assuming maybe somebody here with you is part of the IHOP local ownership, or?
No.
No?
I mean, I guess that's up to you guys, I mean, if you allow it, be allowed it, if you don't, then we have to tell them it's not permitted.
Well, I think that, it's something that's definitely a concern for the administration.
Yeah.
Most things in Macedonia, 11, 12 o'clock at most, kind of shut down, and so I think, you know, there's some concern about 24-hour operation.
Right.
Adjacent to residential.
Adjacent to residential.
I, we understand completely, so like I said, if it's a condition, you know, of the approval, then, then we would not take exception.
Well, I think we'd rather maybe not make it a condition approval, but rather that the local ownership comes and says, we hear you loud and clear, and we'd be willing to.
Yeah, if it comes from us, they'll, they'll abide by that.
Yeah, and I think then, you know, maybe there's a compromise with some of the facade, you know, raising up, because I get, that's a pretty intense.
Understood.
Request.
Yep.
Yeah. So those are all good things, and we do appreciate that you're, you know, you're hearing, hearing these things and making the changes. And then landscaping, you already touched on, you're gonna have somebody, whether it's a landscape architect or an arborist, but somebody with a landscape eye should do that, put together a plan and, you know, put an indicator what's, what's gonna be saved.
Yeah.
Same on the lighting, like, some of those, you know, there's some.
Yeah, the lighting's all getting replaced.
Okay, that's good, yes.
All brand new lighting.
Yeah, and just, you know, take into consideration the design district, and sort of the dark sky initiative.
Right.
Full cutoff, and especially you butt up to that residential, it's really important to be cognizant of that.
Yeah.
And you'll provide a photometric plan that, that shows that.
Yeah.
And historically, the city has used half a foot candle at residential property lines, which you would have. So just be cognizant of that.
That's fine.
And then, as we talked about, the dumpster enclosure, right?
Yes.
That got relocated.
Yeah, and I might shift it just a little bit more to add in a couple parking spaces, so that's, that's all we're looking at. Obviously, theirs was front and center and right at the entry, and it was chain link fence, and that's, that's gone, so we put it behind.
Yeah, I think that's an improvement. Do you, do you think you really need a couple parking spaces? Are you doing it to comply with the code, or?
Well, I think you said they had 60 or 62 spaces, so we need to maintain that. That would be the only reason that we would do that. We did have a, they actually have eight spaces in the, in the back here.
Yeah.
So we actually have one more space, and then plus the two handicap spaces, which weren't in total, so we're actually at about 57, I think, right now. But we could get a couple extra spaces at the back.
Oh, yeah, they're not included.
So, yeah, so it's possible to get back up to like 59, and.
Well, so there's a section of the code.
Yeah.
1171D2.
Yeah.
That gives you the ability up to 20% to reduce your, your square footage.
Yeah.
So I feel like you can definitely achieve it, rather than trying to cram additional parking in just to imply, you probably can do it just based on that.
All right.
Reduction. You gotta show us that you have some ability to reduce, but you do, right? You have mechanical space in there, and you can reduce your parking requirement by illustrating that on a set of plans.
Correct, and this, this is all walk-ins, so it's not having space.
So you can do it up to 20%, so I feel like you can get it.
Yeah.
The city's willing to work with you, and again, appreciate you taking that message back about the 24 hours.
Yeah.
That's important. And then, and then finally signage will have to come back through as a separate requirement.
Correct, that's a separate, so you'll buy the signage. I think what they wanted to make sure, you know, once we get your approval and we sign the lease, then signage company would be engaged, and they would handle their own permits, and that would all be separate.
Yeah, and if, so if they, if they don't, if they come back and work with the city and not have a 24-hour operation.
Yeah.
You wouldn't need that second sign, because that is a bit of an issue, the code doesn't allow two signs on one facade.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure. We have one on the south facade and one on the east facade.
Yeah, your left elevation is identified on your architectural plans, shows the IHOP with the.
Yeah, with the.
And then the 24-hour, that's technically a separate sign, so you wouldn't, you'd have to get a variance for that, so, but that goes away if they don't.
Yeah.
Have a 24-hour operation, that they're gonna, you know.
You're saying on the east elevation or on the west elevation?
Well, I'm looking at, it's identified as your left elevation.
Oh, sorry, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're saying you, this sign is very visible for people coming down 82 from the.
Yeah, I think you're saying that, that would be okay if this wasn't.
Oh, yeah.
They're both labeled left elevation.
Yeah.
Oh, are they?
Yeah. Oh, I have front and left, oh, you're talking about the second.
Yeah.
It's the other.
You're talking about the one that.
I'm talking this one right here.
Okay.
So that's two signs.
The first one.
So, but if you're not, if they ultimately, if they decide to work with the city and not do the 24-hour operation, you won't need that second sign, which orders a variance.
Yeah.
So that's even better, yeah.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I've already explained.
Yeah, so good, and so I think that's it, and again, I think, you know, we do appreciate you guys hearing us and working with the city.
Yeah, okay.
I have nothing to add.
Joe, I saw something new popped up, you didn't have anything to add?
No, it appears that the only, there's really no site work at the site, it's just re-ceiling and a restriping of the parking lot.
Right.
Yeah, so if that continues to be true, then we don't have any comments from an engineering point of view. If anything changes, add anything, rework the sites in any way, just that's showed on a drawing and submit it.
Yeah, like I said, the two main things are relocating the trash enclosure, so that it's more obscured behind the building, and then the pole lines, the new pole lines.
Fire you guys?
Yeah, from the perimeter, it's a little early, plenty of zone, but I mean, building occupancy, looks, it looks like the city, they have proposed, approaches that under Mark.
Yeah, I think the intent right now is to, based on the code, there's two, two things we're looking at. One is to not go over the existing occupant load when you were doing a conversion or remodel in order to stay within that non-screened section, and the other one was, I think, if we're doing an addition, I think it has to be less than either 6 or 10%, I forget off the top of my head. But once again, we, we're treating this, the walk-ins, as not having space because they're essentially refrigeration, and, so we just gotta go back through the code, but we've worked through this on another brand through the state of Ohio, actually through Columbus, the building department in Columbus, so we are aware of that section of the code, and we know the limitations, so, yeah, we'll revisit that and make sure that we comply with.
All right. Okay, well, I think that you Frans hit, most of the big stuff that, that I was concerned with, we appreciate the revised plan, I do, I, much, much appreciate it, and, and like you stated before, the administration feels a way, I feel a way, same way about the 24-hour grid, like that.
Yeah.
So if that's, if that is something that they'll, they'll consider, then that would really, that would really go a long way, in my book. Yeah, and like Mr. Frans said, with the parking, I feel the same way, I'd rather see reduce, make a reduction, just rather than just cram a couple more spots in that don't really fit on the site and make it tough to get around, and if you feel like your park, you know, this number is what you need to park, and you can still meet the code with a reduction from the code, I would rather see that, rather than make it tight over here by the dumpster and have someone park there, and then they go to take the trash out, get some cars.
That's, yeah, we'd have to take care of that.
Yep, so all that kind of stuff. In terms of the, the architecture, yeah, I know there's, Ms. Schultz had quite a few comments. I think those may need to have some discussions with her. She's probably got some, some of the things that she talks about, you know, in terms of the, I think she talked about the ladder and the various elements, you know, trying to make a little bit of improvement. I don't know that I feel quite as strong about redoing the whole roof, kind of like Ms. France said. And I understand your discussion about the, the massing and how this is way back there and to have this come all the way up here.
Yeah.
You're going to have a big old section of this that's bigger than the building.
That, that west elevation, the fact that it's, I think, existing right now, 70, 6 feet long, and then we're adding 18 feet of, of more of brick. And so there is some breakup in there of landscaping, but I know she's like, add a tower and do all this. And I, I think the massing that we have there is fine. And like I said, we can break that up with landscaping if that's allowed.
Yeah. And I think there, there may be some small little things that you could work out with her a little bit that, that might be slight improvements, but, but yeah. Wholesale, big giant changes, I don't know that I, that I feel it's completely necessary. You know, the big thing to me is it doesn't look like Pizza Hut with a black roof.
Yeah.
It's a lot. Pizza Huts are kind of distinctive. You're, you're doing enough to make it. You know, if, if I didn't live here my entire life, I might not know that that's a Pizza Hut. That's what I'm hoping it looks like.
I think they've done a good.
And I think, yeah, you know, someone might go, I think that was a Pizza Hut, but you can't really be sure that, that's, but.
Right.
You know, something, sometimes they can redo some of these places. It's like, well, that was McDonald's. That was a 1970s McDonald's, clearly, and they stuck a daycare.
Yeah, karate where it goes.
But, but, but that, that I think, yeah, I agree with, with everything that Mr. France said. What do you guys, what thoughts do you guys have?
You may have touched on this, so I apologize, but this west elevation here where there is a lot of brick, is that some you'd address with landscaping? Is that working?
Yes. There is actually some landscaping already there, back in the existing back northwest corner. Like I said, around the gas near and around the electrical. I think you can see it on.
Yeah, I was trying to pull that up. I'm on the other side of the street here right now.
I was putting out some photos and toner just kind of, hmm, correct. Yeah. I apologize for not having this.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, so, and that really, items two and beyond on Ms. Schultz's memo are all pretty, pretty easy things that we can.
Oh, I did trash enclosure details. So I actually made, I think, 10 copies of that next brick. So that'll be great matching the building.
Good.
And I think the mentions on there, we have details. So we have that sheet.
Good. Yeah. I think so. Items two, three, four, five, those are more smaller things. They can be, the finite details can be worked out. Item one, it sounds like the commission is okay with some of the changes here tonight. That item is not, not necessarily something you're gonna require. And then I think on that, that other elevation we were talking about with landscaping, there's some other simple things with doing some brick work that can be probably relatively cost-effective as well that.
Yeah.
So Pam and I were talking about that. So.
Yeah. Keep in mind that, that my client does not own this building. He's leasing this building.
Yeah.
So he is actually, you know, building that addition on the back, you know, to screen, screen those walk-ins or whatever, but, you know, as required by code. But other than that, it's, and the, and the whole parapet structure, but he's, he's making improvements to someone else's building.
Yeah. Okay, understood. So maybe it's just landscaping on that, you know, breaking it up with landscaping.
Some great changes and things.
One thing I could say is I think our architect makes a good point with the configuration of the roof. I think this particular part here, I mean, you have a gable on the front here, then you got something like a square box.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't quite drive, I think, the mess. I think there's something, something could be done with that, I think. And I think that's what she's alluding to here.
Oh, okay. Cause so I think the intent there was essentially, we are using that as a screen for the, for the exhaust fans for the hoods.
Okay.
So while there's a, a flat portion up here, then it's recessed down in here and there's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, looking at the.
Maybe I'm just.
Looking at the site plan, we have three exhaust fans in there, from, two from the main cook line hood and one from the fire hood.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that those were high enough to screen that, you know, for code, then you, I think, 42 inches above the roof line minimum.
Yeah. One thing that doesn't necessarily come out when you look at that front straight-on view, that, that you probably will never look straight on is that that this is set back deep from the front of the building too. If this was right up on that front, then it would really look odd. But, you know, it is set back and if you're looking at it from anywhere from down the street, you pick, yeah, you can see it there, you know, from the street. But I, you know, that may be something to look at, what she's talking about, but I'm not sure what, when you do need to screen it, if you're kind of limited on what you could do, but having it set back like that does, I think, in my mind, help a little bit.
Yeah. And plus it's a sign. It functions as our sign.
Sign.
Side sign.
And that just hit me. You got your change in all the windows as well. It's not.
Yeah.
Not the trapdoor.
Pizza Hut windows.
Right.
That's a good word. That giveaway there.
Yeah.
Well, did you see anything else?
No, no, I don't think so.
Well, I think there's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of plans and things that still need to be submitted. There's, I think, in general. This is definitely on, on the path that we, that we want to see. There's definitely some things that, that could be addressed. I think I would like to maybe look into some of these, these two, three, four, five, just a little bit. Is there, is there some small elements that could be done out of that? But I would have no problem with a motion for a preliminary plan approval. If you guys were in favor of something like that. I don't think that requires any, any, we don't have any contingencies or anything at this point. Preliminary approval, there's a lot of items to consider, but I'd take suggestions.
Yeah. So I think I would make your preliminary plan approval subject to the consultants and city staff's memos. With the exception of, it sounds like, with the exception of item number one on Ms. Schultz's memo, that you're, you're willing to, well, it was item number one. Yeah, I think it was item number one. You're willing to work with them on that and that's not changing that roof, the whole roof line.
Yeah.
Item one.
Yeah. My interpretation of her item one was the fact that this parapet was higher than this parapet. That was, that was the only thing that I really got out of that. She's referring to this hit as an answer, I think.
And I mean, she's talking about, you know, the, the pitch of the roof and everything too, which I think is major, major.
That's major, that's structural. So those are existing trusses that we're keeping. We're not, we're not tearing off the roof and redoing the roof.
Yeah. That's, that's where I, you know, when I saw that, that, that scared me a little bit. I mean, that, that, that could be, that's significant.
Yeah. This, this we can do as an overbuild, the gable we can do as an overbuild on that, on those existing trusses. We've talked to our engineer and I've worked with the engineer who was working with Pizza Hut on their previous remodel that they didn't move forward with. So like I said, it's not, not our building. So we're trying to do things that are, you know, within our budget and, and, you know, still maintain that, that our look that is distinct from what was ever to be seen.
You're saying that it structurally can support?
Yes. There, there is actually a current, as I said, a trap is going, actually, the landlord tore that off and then rewrote everything brown. It was red and he tore all that off.
Yeah. And so I think that's what the commission's saying is that item number one, however we interpret Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Schultz's comments.
Yeah.
I think they're saying they're willing to relax item number one and not require you to tear all the way down.
Yeah.
And again, I did just want to say, I know the administration is appreciative that, that they're willing to not do the 24-hour operation.
Yeah, that's understood.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval, subject to the comments from the city staff and the consultants. With the exception of number one from the architectural review consultant. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Alright. Any more discussion? Any other thoughts?
I'd say, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think, so I just want to understand, the city's not requiring you to not have 24 hours, but you're voluntarily stating that's acceptable?
Yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
I oppose. Alright. Well, thank you.
That's part of the final plan approval, that way. The pecan ones are really good.
Thanks. And thanks for being, you get working. And next is building addition at 101 Aurora Road. Come on up.
Hello, my name's Anne Corvo. I'm from College Architects.
Did you catch?
Two seconds. So the project was approved in 2018. I don't know if you remember the building, some existing pictures here.
Two of us were on the board. Mr. Roberts, you're not.
Oh, yeah.
We just had a few modifications that were new since then. I forgot also a scale set here.
Can I just ask one question, Chairman?
Yes.
When you say it was approved, what, what does that mean exactly?
We went to the planning meeting here, about 18 minutes ago. Yeah, it was approved. But we, we have modified it since then and a lot of times passed. So we're, we're back. So we're adding an addition onto this existing building here. And the size is approximately 4,000 square feet. And it's on the side of the building here where the drive-through window is, and we're going to be removing that. So.
So you're taking the whole section off? Cause was the plan before to just enclose that?
They're removing the roof. We are just, then I'm gonna keep the roof as is. We're just gonna put the roof in there.
That's what you're gonna do now?
Yeah.
Okay. So is that similar to what you were doing before?
Long since we changed his, the roof, the roof in the back was, but I wanted to be flat because there is no room to put the roof down. To put the AC, so that's the only change that I'm doing. And the floor pit in the front, we had a plan to put the sidewalk, but I thought the floor pit looks still good. So I prefer to keep it.
So one of the new modifications was that we are going to use a plaque for the new addition. Because of the mechanical that we want to screen. So there's a parapet where the mechanical, you wouldn't be able to see it.
And this is that of the addition. This is, that was the roof. I'm not, I'm not doing the sidewalk because if you're gonna park here, there is going to be, the floor pit is looking so nice. So I just want to keep the places without.
Okay, without a sidewalk.
Yeah, without seeing it. So here is that roof and here is no, no sidewalk. That's not really just bad. Oh, one more thing. We had an issue because we, as you said, then the, the sign, it had different permits. So I removed it from there.
For the new addition, also we're planning on matching all the existing materials, existing bricks and windows and the molding.
Material-wise, it's been seamless.
It's a premium building. I wanted to look at it as it is. It's not, it has, it's all going to be like, look, not look.
And there's no new doors on that section? Like it's not, there's no new, like front door? It's gonna be accessed through? Or is it? Oh, there is. Okay, there is two.
Two, actually.
Oh, I see. Yeah, right there. Okay.
Two in the front and two in the back.
Okay.
And this part of the building, then it looks into this. That's like, this is a very nice entrance here. So this is gonna definitely sort of get the mark.
So the purpose of the sidewalk that you had before was just to get around to the other doors, but the thinking is not put in that sidewalk and people just park over there if you want to go in that.
Yes.
Park over here if you want to go there.
It's gonna be a long walk for them. If they're gonna be parking in the front, they don't need the sidewalk out to the other side.
Okay.
My, my, my plan is like staff, workers stay here.
Yeah.
This guy, this part a lot and this part, this part.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a huge site.
Yeah. So that's, that's my vision of the site.
Alright. Anything else that you want to bring up before we dig into comments?
Comments? Yeah. We did change some things and we did get the comments. We decided to change the enclosure, the dumpster enclosure to brick to match the building. And also we're wondering about the storm drainage. And just to let you guys know that there is, the same drainage is in the back. There is a water retention area.
I am working with a civil engineer. He will gonna provide you the, the, the site with all the stormwater. So I think it's already working. So you will have that, the addition in part of that.
Another thing too, we did add some additional landscaping around the dumpster enclosure, some herbivorous trees. And the updated landscape ground does have mounding along where the new parking will be. And also some trees, new trees.
Okay. Well, listen, we'll go formally. You addressed some of the comments right there. We will go through formally with your friends if you want to discuss your comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reported it July 11th. So what I don't, I'm, I don't have record of is whether a conditional zoning certificate was ever issued for. So that needs to be, you're in there, so that, you know.
It is at this point, right?
But I think just formally, it does need to be approved. You're in there. It's a medical office. It's appropriate, but it technically is required. So I'm not sure how that came about, but it is required to have a conditional zoning certificate pursuant to the code. So you could apply, it's okay. They're not, the city's not gonna shut you down. They could, you could apply, you know, for, when you come back for your final plan approval, you could get to the definite point.
The question, I don't have a tenant. I have a real estate agent. Nobody wants to rent a space on paper. So he wants, I'm, I'm planning just to do a shell. I'm not doing anything inside. I'm just gonna build the windows, the exterior and the interior is gonna be all like.
Shell.
Yeah. I'm gonna give them the tenant improvement and they do, of course, every tenant gonna come to the city and get the permits and, and the design and everything. And, and so, so that's my plan, but nobody wants to rent place, space on, on paper.
Yeah. I'm actually talking about your use. So your.
I'm not, I'm, I'm the owner, but I'm not, I'm not the tenant. So I don't, the dentist who's there is not me. I have two other offices. I'm good. I don't need them.
That, that explains.
It's not me.
So the dentist is there as your tenant?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So they need to get a, at some point, they'll need to get a conditional zoning certificate.
They're already there. They've been there for a year.
I know. I understand. COVID was an amazing time. So I just think at some point they need, they need to get that because it's required. So, so some minor items, the scale issue. So, and then photometrics were previously submitted. But so when you come back, just, you know, resubmit those because it completes out of plans.
We do have a, a new photometric that we got done. It's in that setup game too, that's up to date with the new addition.
Yeah, those, I.
Yeah.
I hinted at, yes.
We probably haven't changed the video yet, but that's good.
But that's good. So we appreciate you having. But that's good, so we appreciate you having that. And the parking, I think, is probably the biggest thing to, to speak to for, for me. And then a little bit of the architecture issue that Ms. Schultz brought up, I agree with her, I'd like to, I think we need to kind of talk through that issue, the roof line, the flat roof, that seems to sort of die on the elevation. But the parking, though, so, it's really only 33 spaces that are required if it's a medical office use. If it's gonna be something else, then it may require more parking. So, if it were a medical, if it's gonna be a medical office use, you only need 33 spaces, 45 are provided. So my comment was, and then you're gonna have this 30-inch retaining wall, there's, I didn't see any details on it, I'm not sure the civil will work through that, but you could, you could potentially avoid that by not having that row of parking, because as it stands, it's within the required setback for parking along 82, along Route 82, it's providing only a 10-foot setback. So, 20 feet's required, you'd have to get a variance to do that, but if that parking is really necessary, you could avoid the expense of retaining wall.
All unnecessary.
Yeah, it's all unnecessary. Yeah, by code, yeah.
Really, my plan is, because I don't know who's the tenant is, is to do the building now, and the, the parking's part, once, once I find out who's the tenant, I will, I will do it, I'll do it according to what they need to do. But the idea is, what if I build a building, and you guys, oh, no, you are not allowed to do the parking, that issue of parking lots for now, I'm stuck with addition that gonna cost you 300,000, $400,000, and that connect with the parking lot, and it's functional. So, so I'm wanting to keep it to...
Perhaps it should be indicated as future, on plans, then?
But, but I would like, I would like to have everything approved, and, and I will delay the process of doing the parking lot till I find out the tenant who needs a lot.
We thought about that, me and my boss, and earlier today, and he, he thought that that was not the best idea, because he thinks that nobody will wanna rent that new tenant space that's on the side if there's no parking besides what's in the back. And he thinks that it will be like a big issue.
It's probably, yeah, it's probably less of a number of spots, and it's, it's more of a location. If this is his front door, and he's got four spots right in front of the door, that's it, yeah, it could be not so appealing.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, we got plenty of parking in back. It's not where people wanna be, you don't wanna have them walk all around the front, so you're trying to get this more for...
To be, oh, it's not the addition.
It's for the location, but...
I don't know if the code changed recently, but on the last approval, we did have the parking in front, I don't know if nobody noticed it last time, or if it, the code did change?
The code didn't change, I feel like it was just probably a missed, a missed requirement.
There were no COVID then.
What's that?
There were no COVID, it was December 2018.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe Christmas mode, mode.
Everybody felt in a giving, in a giving spirit.
I was the only applicant at that time, so you guys took all your time.
Yeah, so I look back at my old memo, and I did not call that requirement out. It doesn't change the fact that it's a requirement, but yeah, that, it is, you'll have to do something to put that there in terms of the setback requirement.
Also, I got a picture here of the other surrounding buildings, and the parking is also...
I got that idea from Jordan, to do the parking lot. I thought if I draw a straight line like Jordan did, put the line, then I would be good.
With the Gordon Food Service, yeah. And I feel maybe they must have got a variance, they probably, likely got a variance.
Sure, they got a variance at the time, and, and they certainly have a retaining wall that's...
They do.
Four feet tall at least, you know?
Mine's gonna be smaller, it might be just two rows of bricks, it's not gonna be the big one.
I guess, yeah, I guess either way, yeah, and they probably did get a variance. We've identified it now, so you'll, you'll, you'll have to get something which, you know, will then, the part of BZA, doesn't, yeah, can't say if they'll approve that, but that's probably something you wanna know now, you know? So you want, you'll have to apply to the BZA as well, to get that variance to allow the setback to be lessened.
Well, I'm stuck with my plan, you know, that everybody's building now is finishing up next month, now if I'm gonna go just to get to the zoning again next month, and the construction dock, and it's, that's gonna push me to April or mid-year. So, timing is, actually, I already told them to start doing the construction dock and to save the time, but now all of a sudden, I have this issue that was not an issue then.
It's unfortunate, I guess, but, you know, we've identified it now, so I mean, it's, it's something we can't approve without that, like, we can approve the rest of the stuff, but if you really feel strongly you wanna get that parking, an additional row of parking up front, you'll have to, have to get that approval.
So Chairman, and correct me if I'm wrong, approval is good for 12 months, correct?
Yeah.
For the 12 months? Yeah, so an approval from 18, if it wasn't act on, would no longer be valid.
Yeah, it's expired.
Yeah.
So, sorry.
Go ahead. Well, is it just going on that, you're right about the Gordon Food Service, I looked at the same thing, they must have got a variance to do that, and my suspicion is they did, because you'll see the decorative fencing there in front, so my guess is that was probably a requirement variance, that decorative black wrought iron fence.
Part of the deal.
Yeah, so, you know, you may wanna be in a position to think about carrying that, that similar style fencing down as part of your application.
I was also wondering if, since we might have to go to BZA, if we want the parking, if we could just get the approval for the exterior and the site while we're here today, before we go to the BZA.
Yes, so that's reasonable, and the commission could, they could approve it subject to, yeah, so you don't have to come back. I think that's, that's a reasonable expectation. You'll, you have to come back here, though, you're only at preliminary now, so you will have to come back and get, provided they approve preliminary plan approval tonight, you have to come back with final plan approval, and, you know, landscaping and all that. And then, the architecture is a piece, that was, I guess, the last thing out of my memo, and Ms. Schultz speaks to it, and her memo is item number five. And her first four items are pretty easy to, they're self-explanatory, but her number five is the same issue I have with the architecture, the, she states here, "The new roof shown on the proposed west elevation seems to slope to or die into a random spot on the elevation, not centered between the two windows. I believe the existing flat roof of the ATM drive proportion of former bank is the tie-in pointing behind the cornice. This looks out of proportion, I believe this issue could be eliminated by utilizing advanced roof type roof with cornice at the flat roof area, which ties into the proposed roof of the new Publa. Eliminating the flat roof by creating advanced roof with cornice would create a parapet area, which would hide future equipment as well." So, that, I think, is an important issue that needs to be talked to in addition to the parking, with the commission.
Yeah, I guess when you wrote that, did you have any thoughts, or I assume you got those comments?
Yeah, we got this comment about the roof, and you're talking about this west, just to understand completely, about changing possibly this sloped area right here on the west side.
Yeah, it would be west and east, right? So, it would, I, I think the way Ms. Schultz describes it would be carrying the roof line, something like that, and then, so it's not, it's going and sort of terminating between the two windows in a more of a meaningful location, but I would encourage you to, to talk that through with her. I'm not an architect, but I, I understand that that's the concept she's trying to achieve, because as it stands, it doesn't tie in, it looks out of place where it meets that flat roof line.
There is like a couple of nothing to look at that at the time, we could also possibly like, put like, have a jog that came out if we didn't hit that corner. That would look like it was a separate piece, is it, it's just like the roof just comes down, and it doesn't look like two separate areas, it's just the roof, it's hard, it's hard to read, is that what she's saying?
I think it looks like, you know, this is a continuous building along here, you know, as it's gonna be built, but the roof kind of just drops off in this middle section of it for no reason, you know? My home roof doesn't go halfway to the back of the house, and it just kinda cut off. Carries through to some logical point, maybe it is some kind of bump out in the building or a bump in, or something.
If, if not the roof that...
Yeah, whether it's a modification of the roof, it's a modification of the building, or something.
Yeah, or maybe that's something that like, would jog out to the side. Okay, yeah, we can think about changing that and make that modification to...
Yeah, I don't think that would be something that would necessarily hold up a preliminary approval, as long as, you know, you want you to work with, you know, either, you may, you may wanna call her and make sure, you know...
Yeah.
What she's, what you're understanding is what she's saying, before you start drawing up ideas, but some kind of back and forth of it, maybe come closer to satisfying what she is asking for, and I'm sure the city can give you a proper contact, if you have one here, but... Okay, we can come back to that, Mr. Chairman, you got anything else on, from you?
No, it's just, you know, again, I think that that is what she's attempting to, that's, I think, what she's trying to describe, and then it gives you the ability to screen, does that, I think you said, or you put your AC, you know, up top, you don't want the ability to put it on the ground and screen it?
So, it would have like a part of the area, there's not all of it for the screening, and the, yeah, the RTUs up here.
So you've already got, so it's already being screened with, behind that flat roof, as I was saying?
Yeah, yeah, so there, there's more than enough space up there, so we took half of it, and so we looked it up.
Okay. John?
Yeah, thanks Chairman, you guys have already really touched on the comments that I had. It sounds like you engaged your civil engineer to draw up the plans, so that's a good thing. Shows the details on the proposed row of parking across the front, already discussed the variance, and to your point earlier, the stormwater retention feature is in the back to the north of your building, so obviously we need to continue to drain the site into the retention part. That's it.
Frank, thank you. Yeah, I think Don forwarded the gist that we have to meet the Ohio Fire Code, whatever we want, proposed, you know, and without the occupancy, it's kind of hard to say, I mean, that kind of arrives the fire code, the construction and occupancy, so...
Thank you. Commission, or I'm sorry, Mr. Riddick, you have anything?
I have nothing to add.
You guys got questions?
Did you intend the entire structure to be a medical facility?
I have no idea if I have a medical, I prefer, I prefer to have a medical person, but if I got insurance agency, then I will give it to them, like...
So this is just a build-out, basically, a shell?
Just, just close the shell, yes.
What are you doing with the inside of the existing building? Are you doing any demolition work in there, then?
And now currently, like, two-thirds of the current building is occupied, and there is one-third that is not occupied, and it has its kitchen, like, two bathrooms, so I might even not need, if I get one, one occupant, I might even not do anything with plumbing or anything, I just like to do the office space. So that's why I just want to do the shell, and just to avoid extra expense that I might even, it might need to be moved out of the road.
Any implications if we don't get medical facility here, get somebody else coming in? Is that a code problem then, too?
Well, they have to adhere to the uses of the district, principal and conditional zoning approval might be needed, depending upon the use. I will say, though, on the, because the frontage is more than 100 feet, there's really going to be no use that's going to trigger more parking demand by code. In other words, it's still gonna be based on one space for every 250, 250 square feet, even if it's a restaurant that comes in there, it's the same parking requirement.
250?
No, no, because you have, according to your architect, here on SD 1.1, you have...
47.
You have 100 feet of frontage, building frontage. So as such, then your parking requirement is one for 250, it's the same for restaurant or medical office.
That's a good to know.
Yeah, so really, it does truly get down to, as Mr. Wester said, it's, you know, four spaces in front of the building, if that's not enough, then you might need to go request a variance for additional parking. You don't need that parking by code. You're not gonna be in a situation where you build this, and the city's gonna say, "Oh, you don't have enough parking, because it's 1 to 50," that's not the case.
But it will improve my chance to have a tenant that have enough parking for his customers, so, nobody wants to park in the back of the building.
Yeah.
Normally, the, the workers will park in the back, and the customers walk in the front, so that's the vision, that four parks, park, that'd be enough to, to encourage it a future, future tenant to take the space. Especially if there is like two or three, because like, I might have one tenant pick at home on the square foot, another 2,000, and another 2,000, so that's, they're all three tenants that are be fighting for, for spots in the front, and it's gonna be a little difficult to encourage people to take the space.
So from what I'm understanding, because your concern is, you get, if you got something approved without those additional spots, you got the building approved, you go and you build it, and then you, a tenant comes in that wants to have that parking, you come back, and you can't get approved for it, whether it's through us, or the BZA, or whatever, then you're stuck, now you've got this unusable, all of a sudden, you can't, can't rent the spots.
Yes.
So that's why you'd like to do it, whether you need it now, or the code, you just, you wanna have that approval, so that you're now...
To have a peace of mind, not to put all this money, and then have an issue down the road with all these steps, that I cannot, it's investment, that I cannot get my money there.
Yeah, so in that, in that case, you know, to the commission, I would just recommend you do it subject to, getting, there's nothing we can do about, whether it was discussed back in 18...
Right.
Or now, there's nothing we can do about that code requirement, you'll have to get, you'd need one then versus now, you have to go get a variance to do that, and it's pretty evident, it's likely what happened with the Gordon Food Service, they probably got a variance, and that's probably why that fence style was chosen, and so, again, I would just encourage you to think forward on that and carry that fence line.
For safety purpose, I have to put a fence, I have to, I don't want somebody falling there, so, so, I will do it, even if you don't want it, I still really do it.
Yeah.
I'm sure we would want the, the wall and the fence to match, or anything.
Yes, 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 yeah, I would, I would make it like, or, I think it's like, to be like, a straight line.
So I guess the, the only, you know, big issues I've seen is, yeah, that we could, we could probably, or I'd be okay with a preliminary plan approval, subject to the BZA approval, and addressing the staff and consultants' comments, you know, working with the architect, and trying to get through some of those issues. If there wasn't any other real issues, we had... If there wasn't any other real issues we had with this then, do you guys have anything to add to that? Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion for preliminary plan approval, subject to approval from the BZA for the setback and any other variances that you might need. And addressing the staff and consultants' comments from the memos. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Yes, okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, so I think first step, and then I would, I would definitely have to be in contact with the building department about the BZA and getting on that schedule.
Susan, what's the, what's the, Susan, what's the, what's the deadline for him, if he wants to get in the next?
Back planning, which?
For BZA?
I, I don't, I want to say it's probably by Friday.
It's pretty quick, it's organized.
It's probably by Friday.
Reach out quickly tomorrow, yeah, and, and she can get you contact information in your hand, you know, that to, to work with. All right, thank you.
Just so you know, it's a pretty, that's a pretty simple application, you already have your plans done, you show the parking, so it's not a, you don't need to go reinvent the wheel, you already have it done, you complete your application, it turns in, you should be good.
We have to come back here or?
It's a different board.
Yeah, there's actually information online in the building department portal for the, the BZA.
They even use it to save the season. I promise I'll bring my pants on. Oh my God, it was weird.
That was a easy challenge.
Before, before we fully adjourn, I wanted to mention that we've lost, Pat resigned a couple of meetings ago and, you know, for the vast audience, you know, we appreciate his, I don't know, five years? How long have you been on?
I don't remember.
He came on after I did, and I've been here five and a half, so he was probably here for maybe four and a half.
I think it was, it was the start, was it the start of?
It was.
Joe, where he's?
It was a little while after.
I keep pointing him. But, so, you know, somewhere in the four and a half, five years, we appreciate Pat's input, but assuming council approves, there, there is a recommended person that is going to the council for, so we'll get back to a full group. Because if we lost one more tonight, we have a cancel, which is not good. So having that extra person will help, and I think it'll be a good person, but, yeah, we appreciate Pat's time that he gave to us. We'll move forward.
You still want more vacancy, right? Well, Mr. Cox is just not here to pay attention, so we're just, just the one vacancy. But I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second it.
All favoring?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, James.